Uh, no, sir. We're just waiting on the YouTube stream to come up, but we should be ready.
Okay. Do you want to give me a go ahead when that live stream comes up?
We are live, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. I think we're set to go. It's right at seven o'clock. Appreciate everyone's work. Get us here again. All the staff work that goes on behind the scenes. So we'll kick things off. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 21st Burlington City Council meeting. For this meeting, the city of Burlington is convening via the Zoom video phone conference platform. As posted on the city of Burlington's website identifying how the public may join. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the platform. And the meetings will be live streamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at Please note, the meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical difficulties or connection difficulties during any point in this meeting, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. For tonight's public hearing and public comments to address the council at this meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if joining us by phone, use star nine. And our meeting host will notify me that you wish to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. So members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protam Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. Staff participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Hoffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant city manager Rachel Kelly.
Yeah.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Community Development Administrator Sonia Randolph.
Here.
Recreation Supervisor and Special Events Emily Crowley.
Here.
Public Information Specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. It's my honor to deliver tonight's invocation. Let's take a moment. We are thankful for this day that has been given to us for its opportunities and its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen.
Amen.
We have a special proclamation this evening, and I'm going to turn things over to Harold Owen. We have recognition for Bob Sutton.
Counsel and, uh, and, and, and anyone who's live on this broadcast today. As a subscriber to the Times News for the past forty-four years, I certainly want to thank, uh, the diligence of coverage that this sports department has been able to provide majority of that time. During Bob's tenure, uh, before we get to the actual proclamation, I can say we can, we can't say how much we thank him for when we were attempting to bring events into the city in terms of economic impact, whether it was national softball tournaments, large soccer tournaments, high school athletic championships, whether in tennis and baseball. Bob was always there. And, and what I noticed of that was, especially from the high school events, was the parents of the visiting teams that came in was really impressed to see a local paper cover that type of event. And that's being missed right now for sure. But with that being said, Bob, I'm, I hope you're on the line. And Bob may be muted, I'm not sure.
Mr. Sutton, if you will unmute your, uh, mic and bring up your video.
I'm here. There we go. It's certainly my honor to present this proclamation to former Times News Sports Editor Bob Sutton on behalf of the Burlington City Council. There's a lot of whereas is here, Bob. That's what we do in, in these proclamations. Whereas is a common term, okay? Whereas Bob Sutton has been the primary author of sports stories in Burlington and Alman's County for twenty-five years. And whereas through his tireless efforts and, and newsroom leadership, Mr. Sutton presided over more than nine thousand times news sports sections from nineteen ninety-five to May of two thousand twenty. And whereas he has championed minor league baseball in this state from the rookie level Burlington Royals to the class triple A affiliate Durham Bulls. And whereas he has followed and encouraged and told the stories of all of our local sports heroes from youth leagues to high school to collegiate to professional ranks as a way for us to follow their success as a matter of enhanced community pride. And whereas he has trained the minute that young writers started their careers. And whereas Mr. Sutton has been named the North Carolina Sportswriter of the Year two times during his tenure. Whereas by showing how sports and sports stories reflect the inner woven fabric of the community, Mr. Sutton has contributed to Burlington and surrounding areas in ways that cannot be measured. There therefore, I, Councilmember Harold Owen, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim July twenty-second, two thousand twenty as Bob Sutton Day in the city of Burlington and urge the community to join us in recognizing honoring Bob Sutton for his trusted journalism and contributions to the city of Burlington. This is the twenty-first day of July, two thousand twenty. Bob, we would love to hear some comments from you.
Well, um, yeah, I guess I got one of the hottest days of the year, as it turned out. Yeah, I just want to thank the council, uh, for this distinction, certainly especially when it comes to a place where I've been, uh, spent a quarter of century of my life here. So, um, you know, that, that's very meaningful. Um, you know, thanks to Harold for the kind words. I've known Harold uh, pretty much since I began, um, at the Times News in nineteen ninety-five, and he was in a different role of the city, but, uh, I certainly have known him, um, ever since. Uh, I've tried to embrace, uh, community journalism, and I think Burlington was just an ideal place to do that. And so Burlington certainly become home to me. And, um, yeah, I look forward to seeing what was next. Uh, hopefully there's another chapter still to write. Uh, thanks again.
Very good. Thank you very much for joining us and for all your commitment to our community.
Congratulations.
We have some applause, even though we're.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. All right. Next on our agenda, we recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Good evening, members of council. It is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Done. Very good. Before council, we have minutes from our May fourth, twenty twenty work session, or May fifth, twenty twenty city council meeting, and our May nineteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those minutes?
No vote. Second.
Motion to approve by council member Ward, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate so with a hand raise as well. Aye.
Aye.
Bob, did you have a vote on that? All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mary Protam Hikes, councilmembers Harold Owen, Jim Butler, and Bob Ward. Next is our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda?
Move, we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda made by Mayor Protam Hikes, seconded by council member Jim Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Kathy Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A to set a date of public hearing for September first, two thousand twenty to consider the lease and use agreement between the city of Burlington and the Burlington Baseball Club, Inc. Item B to adopt a resolution approving the link transit systems, public transportation agency safety plan, PT ASP, and safety sys- system safety plan, SSP, per the North Carolina Department of Transportation Guidelines. Item C to adopt the urgent repair program assistance, URP, and procurement and distribution, disbursement policies. As a final requirement, to receive grant funding from the North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency for URP twenty. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Motion to approve from council member Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have a public hearing scheduled this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been set to receive public comments and consider adopting a resolution for proposed installment financing pursuant to NCGS one sixty A dash twenty G. This time, I'd like to recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. Before I start talking about the financing, I would like to point out that we also have Mitch Briguglio um, from Davenport, who is the city's financial advisors. He's on the phone call as well. The Zoom meeting, um, I think he can unmute himself and, um, start his video. Uh, part of the process, um, if you have any questions for either one of us, we'll be glad to answer them. Part of the process for borrowing includes having a public hearing, which the city is having tonight. Uh, in these unprecedented times, Cassius King and city staff felt it may be best to pursue financing for the new building for the carousel and for the rest of restoration of the carousel itself. With the low interest rates that are, we, we are experiencing right now, the LGC has recommended that it is a good time to borrow. The city has to have LGC approval since we would be financing for a period greater than fifty-nine months. The city normally does an annual installment financing for three years for vehicles and equipment every year. But since there are a certain amount of fixed cost with borrowing, staff is recommending that we combine the annual three-year installment financing with this financing for the carousel and the building. Also, each year, there are many projects that don't make the capital list and are cut and pushed down the road. Can we squeeze one more year out of it? When it was decided that we ought to pursue this installment financing, we looked at some of those projects that will inevitably have to be done sometime in the near future. Things like a fire truck that was cut from last year's and this year's budget due to COVID nineteen. We also added the HVAC at Fire Station Headquarters, the driveway and wall repair at Fire Station Number Two, the front landing at City Hall, the City Hall chiller, and the light poles at Fairchild Fields. City staff is recommending that council approve the resolution of findings that can be found in your agenda packet tonight, which includes a proven, approving option three bid from Truist Bank for fifteen years at one point eight five percent with a payback not to exceed ten million, six hundred forty-three thousand, twenty-five dollars. We received bids from Truist US Bank and First Bank, First Bank, and Truist was, uh, the winning bid. Mitch and I will be able, will be happy to answer any questions that you have now or after the public hearing.
Very good. Any questions from council?
Peggy, did you say one point eight five percent?
Yes, sir. One point eight five percent.
Good job.
Appreciate you bringing that in much lower than our top estimate.
Yes, we did.
Mitch, I want to welcome you to the call officially. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just to clarify, Peggy, I think you mentioned that option three is the staff recommendation of the options in the packet.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? Otherwise, we will officially begin the public hearing. Uh, again, at this point, if you would like to speak, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone. If you are having any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. We'll take just a moment for our folks to, to check in and see if we have any public comments. Take just another moment. Again, if you wish to speak at this time regarding item one on our public hearing agenda, please use the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. Looks like we have no indicated comments from folks. All right. So with no, uh, no public comments indicated, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing from council member Butler, seconded by council member Ward. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. At this time, are there any other council questions, or do I hear a motion?
Do you want to mention that I'd got an email from George Adam, who was opposed to our doing this?
Thank you. Any other council comments, or do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to go forth with to, uh, to adopt this resolution for proposed installment financing.
Second.
Motion to, uh, adopt option three in the installment financing made by council member Owen, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions from council regarding the motion or questions for staff? All right. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate so with a hand raise. Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, everyone. Move to item two. A public hearing has been set to receive public comments and consider approval of the CDBG five-year consolidated plan, twenty twenty action, annual action plan. At this time, I'd like to introduce Community Development Administrator Sonia Randolph.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, we have before you a public hearing in regards to our CDBG five-year consolidated plan and our twenty twenty annual action plan during this meeting tonight. We request that city council approve submission of the CDBG five-year consolidated plan and the twenty twenty annual action plan to HUD at the close of the public hearing. Before the public hearing starts, um, we will have a presentation by our Civitas South Carolina Consultants, um, Spencer and Eric. And I think Spencer and Eric are actually on the Zoom call right now.
I saw them pop up here.
I'm sorry?
I saw them pop up earlier.
Okay.
Let's see.
Hi, good evening. Yes, we're, we're both in as panelists. However, our, uh, videos have been, uh, sharing videos has been blocked and uh, we're unable to share screens at this time.
Scott, can we get them promoted to presenters? There we go. All right. Looks like we've got a screen up now. Folks should be able to see that. Okay, Eric and Spencer with us via video. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and, um, members of the public. Again, as Sonia mentioned, my name is Eric Chatham, and with me is Spencer Christian. Well, we are with Civitas. Uh, we have been partnering with the city for, uh, many months now to generate the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four consolidated plan, which includes, uh, the twenty twenty annual action plan. The consolidated plan is part of an ongoing process, which includes each five years developing this consolidated plan. This is a requirement by HUD for all grantees of the CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant Program. This consolidated plan is very similar to a city's comprehensive plan, where every few years you take kind of a pause in the programs and activities that you're running to reevaluate the needs of the community, the programs that are offered in the community, and to establish or to reestablish priorities and goals for the upcoming five years. Then each of those five years, you develop an annual action plan that specifically lays out funding allocations for programs and projects that will address those identified priorities and goals. At the conclusion of each program year, the city prepares for the public and for HUD's review Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly referred to as the CAPR. And as that title suggests, that's a review of what was accomplished, uh, during the previous program year. So in summary, the consolidated plan is more of a process that's ongoing. However, the three main components of the consolidated planning process, the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and the CAPR. Specifically for the consolidated plan, as I mentioned, it's a requirement by HUD. At a minimum, every five years, this must be completed as a stipulation for receiving the Community Development Block Grant Program. The city received those, uh, programs each year as an entitlement community. Those funds are primarily to serve persons of low to moderate income by providing decent housing, creating suitable living environments and community, and expanding economic opportunities for low-income residents of your community. We also have helped the city develop or update its citizen participation plan. And that plan, uh, meeting HUD guidelines requires that the city each year conducts two public hearings. We're conducting one now in conjunction with the consolidated plan and annual action plan. And the city will conduct one, a second public hearing at the end of the year to share the CAPR with the public. The summary of, of the proposed plan will be shared and has been available for a comment period. Um, and as Sonia mentioned in her introduction, the comment period will conclude with council's, uh, feedback this afternoon, this evening. And all public comments that have been received to date and might be received this evening will, um, are required to be given in consideration and will be included in the summary, uh, as we submit to HUD. There are five major components of the consolidated plan. We're going to touch on some highlights tonight. But again, the full plan is available on the city's website for public review, uh, should they would, wish to dive in further. The first section is the needs assessment, which reviews the needs of the low to moderate income households, uh, in Burlington. The second section is the housing market analysis, as it sounds, takes an inventory of the housing stock within Burlington compared to the needs of the residents of Burlington. Naturally, that comparison of what the market is providing versus the needs of the low-income population, we identify gaps or shortages. In the strategic plan, we identify those as priorities. And then we establish goals to address those priorities over the following five years. Finally, the annual action plan, which will identify specific funding for projects and programs this year. And again, the citizen participation efforts. I'll mention at this point, and then Spencer will provide some details following. Uh, we hosted two different public surveys, one for the general public and one for service provider organizations. We also hosted a series of public meetings, and we have presented in front of this council body, uh, a number of work sessions prior to this. So that the plan, um, has been presented, um, several times in public, and feedback has been garnered in a variety of ways. The HUD allocation for twenty twenty, uh, again, CDBG, four hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. The city anticipates just over two hundred and eighty-two thousand in program income or revenue generated from previous projects and programs for a total of seven hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars available for this program year. At this point, I'll turn it over to my colleague Spencer Christian to summarize the citizen participation efforts and the action plan funding for this year. Spencer?
Good evening. So the citizen participation included a community survey that received a hundred and fifty-seven responses and a stakeholder survey receiving about twenty-four community organization responses. And the community survey results included identifying priority needs of affordable housing, economic development, and public services, which are all eligible uses of the CDBG, uh, funds, which we'll dive into on the next slide. And the stakeholder survey highlighted similar community needs of affordable housing, public services, as well as infrastructure improvements and economic development. Next. So the CDBG eligible uses, uh, include public improvements, public services, rehabilitation of residential and even non-residential, um, buildings, as well as economic development and, uh, planning and administration. So these are the items that HUD allows, again, with the primary beneficiary being low to moderate income households or neighborhoods. Um, and so when we dive into the priority needs and what activities are set up, we have this framework in which we can allocate, uh, the funds, um, evenly or, uh, annually. Next slide, please. So for the next five years, these have been identified as the priority needs on the left-hand side to, which includes expand and improve public infrastructure and facilities, public services and quality of life improvements, economic development, and preserving and developing affordable housing. And the goals for each corresponding priority need are listed on the right. And I should mention that these goals are not ranked, uh, however, they are categorized to help facilitate, uh, the structure of the plan and the strategic, uh, goals within the plan. And these priority needs and goals will sort of set the framework for the next five years. And each annual action plan will lean on these as it lists the various projects and activities, uh, for allocation of funds. Next. So for the twenty twenty annual action plan projects, this is how, um, the city proposes to, uh, allocate the funding with fifteen percent going towards administration, uh, just over a hundred and thirteen thousand. Public, public facilities and infrastructure improvements will see the bulk of the funds, uh, over four hundred and seventeen thousand or fifty-five percent of what's available. And that goes towards public facilities, parks, uh, ramps, sewer and water, et cetera. Uh, public services will receive about twenty percent or a hundred and forty-eight thousand, and that's being, uh, split up between various, uh, housing and, basically nonprofit organizations within the community. And finally, emergency repair and economic development, each receiving five percent or just over thirty-seven thousand. Again, for the total, uh, program year of seven hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. Next. Next, please. So the final steps, as discussed, uh, earlier, uh, is today's public hearing to receive any comments. And of course, seeking approval to submit the consolidated plan uh, and the annual action plan to HUD, uh, following the close of this public hearing, and any last updates to the con plan.
Very good. Thank you, Spencer and Eric. Sonia, anything else you want to add before we begin the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. And so I have to encourage anyone joining us via Zoom to use the raise hand feature at this point to speak, or if you're joining us by phone, to use star nine. Uh, and again, if you have any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three three six five one three five four four zero. Give folks just a moment. Again, use the raise hand feature or star nine to alert us that you wish to speak regarding item two on our public hearings. Okay. It looks like we have, uh, one request right now. It is from Michael Graves. Oh, recognize Michael Graves at this point. All right, Michael, are you with us?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, question I have is.
If you could state your address for the public record before you begin your comment.
Uh, Burlington, North Carolina. The question I have is, uh, about the survey. Who, uh, received the survey? And how did y'all de- determine who will receive those surveys? Not that I needed to get one, but I worked in public housing for twenty-four years. Uh, we have a program that works with, uh, at-risk individuals, uh, that could use, uh, a certain would be needing, this type of housing. So I just want to know how, when I hear these things, a lot of council meetings and commissioner meetings, I always wonder how was it determined who got the surveys?
Do you have?
Thank you, Michael, for those comments. Um, if you could state your street address for the public record.
Do you need that?
We do. That's official policy.
210 Union Avenue.
Thank you. All right.
May I respond, Mayor?
Yeah, normally we, do you want to respond to that individually, or we can respond after all the public comments?
However, you would like to do it.
We can do it after the public comments. So next I have a comment from Ms. Barbara Enick Day. Mr. Day, are you with us?
Um, yes, I'm here, but I was moving around through my application and I may, I thought I lowered my hand.
Okay.
Comment right here.
Okay, that's all right.
But since I'm here, I would like to say that I like what I just saw. It is a start. And I hope that it's going, this program, it will, will do something on the east side of, east side of Burlington.
And if you could state your address for the public record.
Okay, I'm sorry. 809 Ray Street, Burlington, North Carolina, 27217.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Day.
You're welcome.
All right, any other comments? Again, folks can use the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. It looks like we have a comment from Greg Hargrave. Recognize Mr. Hargrave at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can hear me on-
We can hear you. If you could get your address for the public record.
Yes, my address is 717 Cannonay Drive in Witsit, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I just, we certainly submitted a statement regarding the Apparage Project, and I know Sonya Randolph has that. I just, I wasn't sure of the procedure, and I just wanted to make sure that I just said something about that. And will that be read, or, or do I need to kind of summarize that? I just wanted to ask that question.
We were not, we don't read the comments. If you submit a written one, it does get included into the comment section of the con plan that gets sent to HUD.
Great. I think that will be fine. I appreciate the opportunity to submit that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. All right, again, this is a public comment for item two on our public hearing agenda. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone. Give just a moment to see if anyone else wishes to include their comments at this point. Looks like that concludes our public comments. Do I hear a motion from councils to close this public hearing?
I'm moved.
Motion to close public hearing from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. At this time, if staff or Eric or Spencer would like to respond to any of the comments or questions from the public hearing.
You want me to respond?
Sure.
So the, in regards to Mr. Graves' question as to how the survey was distributed. So we did advertise on the community development website, there was a link, a survey monkey link. The survey was provided in English and in Spanish. So we did, we released a public press release that ran in the newspaper before the link went active. We also did ads on our Facebook page, and it was also advertised on the website, as I mentioned before. So that link ran, I think, from January all the way up until about March, mid-March, right until the COVID crisis. Is that correct, Eric or Spencer? We left the link open. Until that time, we also did have a public hearing or a community needs assessment as well. That was advertised in the paper, and we had, we also advertised it on the website in that the community needs assessment, people were given actual paper copies of the survey that they could fill out during that needs assessment. We also sent emails out to people who were on our stakeholders list. So there is a list of nonprofits that we had. So if you're nonprofit, Mr. Graves is not listed, did not receive an email, then I do implore you to either email me or maybe get with Morgans. I think our lists are almost the same. That we did email out a list to nonprofits in the Burlington area as stakeholders, because the stakeholder survey did look a little bit different than the regular community survey. And so as you saw from the presentation, we did have over 24 nonprofits represented at that stakeholders meeting, and so they were also given the chance to fill out paper copies of the stakeholder survey at that needs assessment that was done back in February. And also, again, there was still also a stakeholders link that was active on the website.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry. We also did send out letters. We also sent out some letters to nonprofits too, that we knew of, and we asked nonprofits to advertise to their constituents as well.
Very good. Thank you. Any council questions at this time?
If one, if I could. Obviously, from year to year, we don't know what this funding levels will be. But if, if indeed the city begin to look at a larger project, could funds be allocated in one year, realizing that wouldn't be enough to do this project, and then hoping to depend on getting funds for the next year of the applications to accomplish something of a bigger range if we decided to go that route?
Are you referring to a multi-phase project?
Well, it could be a multi-phase. It could be just getting enough funds in place to, to make the project work, yes.
We do that currently with some things that we were doing over at North Park. Yeah. So North Park has had several phases, and we have used CDBG funds to fund several phases of the North Park redevelopment process.
So it extends out beyond one fiscal year. The project's just staged so that one phase in one fiscal year can get an allocation of money, and then the next phase and so forth until it's complete. And how we did that?
Yeah. And I know, Eric, is there anything else that you would like to add to that?
Well, I'll just add that while you're allocated funds each year, when, when the city signs the, the grant agreement with HUD, it also, it actually authorizes you to spend those funds over a six-year period. Now granted, there's some other requirements that require the city to have, to spend down those funds. So you couldn't just accumulate years and years of funds. But you do have the authority to, to sort of hold some of those funds. So yes, sir, to answer your question, you could either do the phased approach, which is certainly reasonable, but you could accumulate funds over a couple of years as long as you were otherwise spending down to meet those. HUD refers to it as a timeliness test, which I'm sure you've heard of before.
Thank you.
The council questions? All right, do I hear a motion to approve the CDBG five-year consolidated plan and 2020 annual action plan?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the CDBG five-year consolidated plan and 2020 action plan, motion made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Eric and Spencer, thank you for joining us. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you. Sonia, thank you as well.
Thank you.
That moves us on to the new business section of our agenda. Item three, city council will consider an appointment to the 2020-2021 Burlington Housing Authority Advisory Board. This time, we'd recognize Public Information Specialist John Vernon. Welcome, John.
Thank you. So yes, last, during the July 7th meeting, a appointment because due to confusion over a partial appointment expiring in 2020, an appointment to the Burlington Housing Authority was left off the slate that you, the council approved. The applicant did wish to be reappointed, and she submitted her application. And I sent those to you among the other applicants for that seat, for that appointment, for you to, to decide on. I'm here to have any questions.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion regarding the appointment for this Burlington Housing Authority position? And I believe, John, the, the candidate for reappointment is LaShawna Austria.
Yes, that is correct.
So that's essentially a reappointment?
Yes, it is.
So I will propose that we appoint LaShawna Austria to the Burlington Housing Authority Advisory Board.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion to point LaShawna Austria to the Burlington Housing Authority Board from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. And just to clarify, that's a full-term reappointment, if I'm correct. All right. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, John. Next on our agenda, item four, city council will consider temporarily closing a portion of City Parking Lot One, beginning on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, until Friday, August 7th, 2020, the United Way of Alamance to host a Spirit of Alamance Food Drive special event, contingent upon meeting all the requirements of the City of Burlington's special events permit application process. At this time, we'll recognize Recreation Supervisor and Special Events, Emily Crowley.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for having me on the Zoom call this evening. United Way is requesting to utilize City Lot Number One, just a portion to park a trailer for another drive-through food pantry, Spirit of Alamance event, just as they did in the month of June. That one was very successful, so they are looking to host another one two weeks from this Thursday. So the trailer that will be parked will be parked for three days. Vehicles will still be able to drive through that area of the parking lot. And then just during the event, they'll have a little bit more structure with staff kind of guiding cars, but there is vehicle access. So Ann Connolly from United Way is on the call this evening. I can tell you a bit more if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Do we have an idea of how much food was collected at the last event in June?
Hey, um, we had over 3,200 items. I think around 3,700 pounds of food. We had around 130 cars come through. And that drive, the food went to Safe and Salvation Army.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a spot where folks can find out more information about the best foods that you're looking for with this drive?
Yes, our Facebook page. We have all kinds of information there and on our website.
Excellent. Any other council questions? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the request to temporarily close that portion of City Lot One, contingent upon the special events application process and requirements.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Emily and Ann. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Successful drive. Hopefully, the weather's a little cooler for the volunteers.
Thank you.
All right. And this moves us on to item five on our new business. City Council will consider adopting water and sewer policies and procedures and payment plan for water and wastewater services subject to Executive Order 124 and Executive Order 142 to be effective immediately, as written. At this time, we'll recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese.
Thank you again for the opportunity to appear before you. Governor Cooper issued Executive Order 124 back at the end of March, and then he extended that order with Executive Order 142 through July 29. Both of these executive orders issued by the governor prevented utilities from shutting off customers for non-payment. The order also prevented utilities from charging any late fees or interest on any charges incurred during this timeframe. The Executive Order 142 is set to expire on July 29, and we have been told that the governor is not, doesn't have any plans on extending that order. And so the School of Government and the Local Government Commission strongly recommend that the city have a policy in place that has been approved by council to begin collecting on these past due amounts. The Executive Order states that we must allow at least the customer at least six months to pay the past due amounts. And so staff is recommending that we take all of the amounts that are past due. And what I mean by that is, before the governor issued his first executive order at the end of March, we had some customers who were late and who were behind on their payments. So we're taking those amounts plus the amounts covered by the executive order, lumping it all together into one lump sum and dividing that by six months. And for the past due amount, so the customer will be responsible for making the past due amount payment each month for six months and their current bill month. The current bill for that current month. So both those payments together. For customers for whom it applies, CDBG has some money set aside to assist. Also Allied Churches, City Gate, and Women's Resource Center also have some funds to assist with past due utility bills. So we, Sonya and her staff have, are preparing an application for us to give the customers when, when we are getting them to sign this payment plan so that they, if they qualify, they could get some funds from that, those sources to help pay for their bill. So staff is recommending that the council adopt the water and sewer customer service policies and approve the policy regarding the payment plan for those customers affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council?
Thank you. So what you're saying then is that the list, in other words, you guys understand the people who are back in payment. If I'm not mistaken, correct?
We have a list of those customers, yes.
Okay. And then there will be a agreement drawn up with those, each individual customer in terms of the opportunity to extend it over six months, or they could pay it off early if they desire to. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be glad to take the money.
Right, okay. Now, what occurs at the end of six months if the payments have not been made? Or to the final, or paid to the, to the extent which they, they exist?
If they even miss, let's say they make the first, first two monthly payments, but don't make their third one, we at that time could technically cut them off, but we'll work with customers on a case-by-case basis and also refer them to these four places that I previously mentioned about if they could, should qualify for those CDBG or Allied Churches or the other places funds.
Customers are we talking about, Peggy?
Well, on that information that I sent you last week, there were 1,100, I believe, that were more than 120 days past due. I think there were about 600 who were 61 to, or 90 to 100 days past due. So we're probably in the ballpark of 2,500 to 3,000 customers all total.
Other questions from council? And as far as the allocation of some of those funds to assist folks, I assume there's a kind of a process and a criteria set to determine need there that's being developed along with the application.
Sonya, do you want to address those questions, that question?
Yes, ma'am. And I do want to point out that-
Yes, ma'am. And I do want to point out that today, so the organizations that Peggy had mentioned, Allied Churches, the Women's Resource Center and City Gate, it was left up to them out of the statutory, what you could spend the funds on based off of the statute. Allied Churches is not going to be offering utility assistance. They will only be offering rental assistance. I do just want to point that out. In regards to the application and the qualifications, the, the main qualifications that people do need to meet is that, one, they do have to qualify based on low income status. So we will have to have income documentation from the households of all household income coming in. If people have lost their jobs or if they've been furloughed or if their income has been reduced, then they would simply just have to either provide a letter from their employer or provide us with, especially if they don't have any income or if they are self-employed. They can provide us, there is a form that we will make available that has a zero income documentation that people, that HUD is allowing individuals to self-certify with. So again, the income status has to be met. They do have to be considered low to moderate income based off of their household size. The other qualification is that they must be a Burlington City resident. The other qualification, main qualification is that there has to be some type of COVID-related hardship. So that means either an illness or something where, again, they were furloughed or they were laid off. So some type of evidence or documentation of that of a COVID-related hardship. And they must show a past due invoice with a past due status starting on March 10. So it can't be before March 10. So we would not be able to, if someone was late, starting, say, even if it was March 1st. You know, our COVID did not really start having an impact or making hardship on households until March 10. So that is the date that we have set. So they will have to show a past due invoice on or after March 10. So those are the main qualifications that we will be looking for. I'm sorry. And then they also have to document that there is a non-duplication of benefits. I apologize. So there's a question that we do ask is if they have received financial assistance from either another organization such as Women's Resource Center or City Gate, or if they have received any other type of governmental assistance or cash assistance from churches or other nonprofits. HUD has been very particular about the non-duplication of, of benefits. So we were not able to give people more than what they need.
Other questions from council? Do I hear a motion to approve on this one?
I'm moved. Second.
There's a motion from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Ward, is to approve the water and sewer policies and procedures payment plan for water and wastewater services. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Sonya and your team, and Peggy, for your work on this. It's a very challenging topic as cities across the state and the country deal with how we continue to provide these services. All right, that concludes our regular agenda items this evening, moves into our public comment period. As previous in our public comments, if you do wish to join us, you can use the raise hand feature or the star nine on your phone. Public comments were also allowed to be emailed to us at publiccomments@berlingtonnc.gov, and were accepted up until five o'clock today. Those comments will be made public through the Zoom meeting platform link. And then, again, use the raise hand feature or star nine. If you do have any technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon, three, three, six, I'll find that phone number again. Three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. All right. It looks like we have one public comment at this point. I'm going to remind folks to please state your address and you will have five minutes for public comment. So at this time, we recognize Reverend Donna Van Hook. Reverend Van Hook, if you could state your address for the public record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My address is three, one, seven Caswell Street, Burlington, North Carolina, two, seven, two, one, seven. On this evening, I want to start by thanking Councilmember Butler for his response on last meeting when he talked about your behavior, Mayor Batutus. I totally agree and thought it was unethical for you. Not, this is not a bash or anything. I'm just stating what I thought. That it did show a remarkable lack of leadership for you to go into another city to do things when there are things in Burlington that need to be handled, especially the way my complaint against the chief has been handled unethically. And also, I see where there will be a conversation on race and equity on Monday, July 27th, with the city mayor, I mean, the city manager, the chief, and the mayor pro tem. I don't know what the, what the goal is for that. However, with all the unethical behaviors that have been happening since I filed my complaint in October the 20th, 2019, it seems to me that there should be some more listening rather than talking. Also, I did file a complaint with Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Hikes against City Manager Harden Watkins for the way that he handled my complaint against the chief unethically. And also with claims against my character, saying that I had ulterior motives for filing the complaint. I would like to know if the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem received my complaint against the city manager. And also, I would like to know a status of that complaint. That is my public comment for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend, for those comments. Next public comment this evening is from Ms. Barbara Enick Day. Ms. Day, if you could, just for record, state your address again, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Barbara Enick Day. I live at eight, zero, nine, Ray Street, Burlington, North Carolina, two, seven, two, one, seven. I'm just going to make some commentary and to Harden Watkins. I have yet to hear back from anyone out of the Transportation Department about the stoplight at Dudley Street and Raw Hut Street. And I brought this issue to the City Council during the time that we were able to attend in the, in the building. And that's probably been over six months ago. So as a resident and a taxpaying citizen, I expect some, I expect some feedback from there. And next, I want to speak to, we've, we've talked about East Burlington, and that get pushed under the rug. I think Ms. Fran Edwards from the last meeting, July 7, she spoke out about the systemic racism. And of course, that, you know, she was only given three minutes, and I was concerned about the three minutes. But at some point, we are going to have to speak on it. I would like to bring to the council's attention. You have, I am a baby boomer. I'm one of the younger baby boomers. But you have people that is relocating back here from all over this country where they went away, maybe to college, and they continue to, you know, do their career somewhere else. And when I, my, my tenure was in the DMV, which is the DC, Maryland, Virginia area. But you got people such as Ms. Edwards that was in New York. And we are, we are used to conveniences, okay? If there's none but to walk out our door, take a walk, and we get the bodega or jump on the train, jump in an Uber. We are used to conveniences. So to have lived here, you know, as a, growing up here, along this corridor here on Raw Hut Street, we had all kinds of businesses over here. So we, we come back and we expect more than what we see. And I will move on now to my next commentary. There was a meeting that was held with Michael Graves, his group, I think Reverend Larry Covington was in it along with the Burlington Police Department and Almanis County Sheriff's Department and some more law enforcement departments here in Alamance County. And no one knew about this meeting, and I, I don't know why you got to choose Michael Graves. But, but let me just say this. He does not speak for the African-Americans on a whole. He doesn't speak for my community because I think Ms. Fran Edwards, she named different communities that is still segregated here. And I think, you know, in fairness to everyone in the African-American community, I think that when you're having meetings like that, you need to, you, you need to choose more than just, you know, one group or individuals, you know, so because we all have something that we can bring to the table. Now, there is a discussion about a, a community review board. There, that is an opportunity to get other people that is a part of this city involved. And in, in any community review board that you may have. And defunding, I understand defunding. But I, I think Mr. Graves think that we, people does not understand defunding. We understand what defunding is. No, I'm not saying get rid of our police department, but we got to take some of those funds and we got to allocate some of those funds other places so we can make the community a better place, a safer place for everyone. And that's my comment for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Day. All right. Next, it looks like we have a comment from Mr. Michael Graves. Mr. Graves, if you could state your address for the public record again?
Two, ten Union Avenue, Burlington, North Carolina. Let me first address, I, I don't speak for anybody but the ACT team. The ACT team is the organization that I started to work in the community. I founded it. I'm president of it. We have members of it. And we initiated the process to tackle police reform, all the organizations that are doing the same thing. And, you know, she wants to attend those meetings. She's, she can. That meeting with the Sheriff Department, I mean, excuse me, with the police, law enforcement was advertised, and I'm sorry, she didn't get the information. But I speak for ACT, and, and that's it. Two concerns that I do have, one personal and one is a public concern. Public concern is about, again, law enforcement. I've been talking with different agencies, especially with Graham in the light of the Jaquan Light shooting. And Harold will remember this, and I know Chief Smike will remember this as well. When the concerned citizen, when I was president of that, we put on a form to get body cams at the Paramount, and we had all the city managers there. And that's when the local law enforcement started getting the body cams. Mr. Light was shot when three officers attended to serve a warrant at night, and one of the officers didn't have his body cam on. So when I look back at the budget for the city of Burlington, I want to make sure, and not just Burlington, but the county, the Sheriff's Department, Graham, I want to make sure that we're not cutting training because this incident in Graham was from a twenty-year veteran who did not turn his, his body cam on. And so I hope that we're not cutting funding for training. I think I did see that in the Burlington budget. I also would like to know if anyone of the, I did ask a couple of council members, not, I'm not going to say present council, but I've asked this question before, why is it that we have public comments for the budget in June? Isn't it too late then to make any changes if the public doesn't agree with something in that budget? So why can't we have that public comments, you know, a little bit earlier? And if we're finding a little problem with finding money in Burlington, I've said this for a long time. The golf course, I think we spent about two hundred-plus thousand dollars on a golf course. Right now, I think public safety is more important than playing golf. And everybody don't play golf. I did a long time ago, but I don't know anymore. But I am a citizen, and I want to make sure that we're safe. And if we having to cut the public safety budget, I would think maybe we could take some money from the golf course, just maybe. Now, the other thing is a personal concern that I have. I really do feel like the mayor is personally attacking me, a citizen. I really do feel that way. And I'm not going to go into all the things that I think he has done. But, but the mayor's oh for three. I can just tell him that. Just tonight, obviously, with the BHA situation, Councilwoman Hikes made a motion to reappoint an individual who had already served on the board. But her and the mayor opposed my appointment and Dorothy Yarborough's appointment, saying that we need new leadership. So I would expect that the mayor and Councilwoman Hikes will not be running for reelection because if we need new leadership, we can need it on the council as well. So if they're saying that we need new leadership on these boards, then that would include the council. I just believe that the mayor has it. I think he thinks I'm going to run against him. I make, I'm very critical of things. I have their right to be. I think when Harold was city manager, he could tell you that I disagree with him on a lot of issues. But I don't think it became personal. I'm sure Harden will say that I'm going to disagree with him on a lot of things. It's not going to become personal. I think the mayor is becoming personal. I will say this. As when I was president of the NAACP, I used to say all the time, I don't do much marching. Dr. King did that. When I march, I march to the courthouse to file a lawsuit. I'm not going to send you another cease and desist.
Wrap up your comments. You have five minutes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to send you a lawsuit, Mr. Mayor. You need to be professional in your position. And since you need new leadership on these boards, I would thank again that you and Kathy Hikes won't run for reelection so we can get some new people on the city council. Y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Graves, for those comments. We have just another moment. If other folks wish to comment, again, you can use the raise hand feature or the star nine on your phone at this time. All right. It looks like that concludes our public comments this evening. This time, we'll move on to. Do we have some?
We do have one email comment.
Excellent.
This email came in this morning from George Adams of three, seventeen Bidney Drive in Burlington. Came in today, July 21st at nine oh six AM. The subject was front page article in the Burlington, North Carolina Times News called Burlington to Consider Loans, CDBG Annual Plan. I'm just going to read what he emailed. To my knowledge, he is not present to read this tonight. Mr. and Ms. Burlington City Council, I am against any more debt at this time. Four million for a new carousel house when the old location has never flooded. A total of ten million or more for other liked to have. What about the consultant who said it would be more efficient to merge the city and county nine-one-one center? What about the police having their own cars to drive back and forth to work? What about the riderless linked transit system? What about no funds being spent on southeast Burlington? What about the pay and bonuses for city employees during this pandemic? What about the new economic advisor with only a Johnny House and colored factory with maybe a redo of the downtown market? That was submitted by George Adams, three, seventeen Bidney Drive in Burlington.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Adams, for those comments. Again, folks can submit comments via email if you are not going to be able to be present for these virtual meetings. All right. So we'll move on to council comments. Do I hear any council comments at this time? Would like to remind folks of a couple upcoming events. This This Friday in downtown is the Art Walk in place of our Fourth Friday event. This is designed as a public distancing event. It's on July 24th from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Also, as just approved on our council agenda, the Spirit of Alamance Food Drive will be from August 5th to 7th in city parking lot number one. Big reminder on census is still going on, something that's absolutely fundamental to the way we operate cities and our government. We need to have good census data, and folks can still complete their census online at We need you to remind friends, family, neighbors, everybody to get out there and complete the census because I think we're still hovering around a 60% completion rate, and we'd really like to see that get closer to at least 85%. And then, we have an election this year, if you were not aware of that. There's a couple updates coming, and I wanted to share a few. One is the city of Burlington is helping add a one-stop early voting location at the Elmira Community Center. That's something the Board of Elections has been looking for, an additional one-stop early voting location, and we're proud to be able to make that possible over at the Elmira Community Center. Vote by mail begins September 4th. Folks can request ballots online. I know that's something that a lot of folks are concerned about with the current pandemic. And then, they're still looking for poll workers. Great opportunity to serve your community and make 10 or more dollars an hour through the Poll Working Program. And then, for our parents out there, ABSS announced today that they are switching to the Plan C reopening of schools, which means that starting August 17th, they'll be under the Plan C Remote Learning Program for the first six weeks of schooling. So, just an update there. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mayor, let me ask you, what is the giveaway or the pickup of the mask that we're doing for the citizens?
I think Harden or Emily, if you want to touch on that, there's a North Park Mask Giveaway Program.
Yeah, I can share more details. We've been packing masks with staff distance this week. We'll start Friday at city lot number one from 11 to 1 p.m. We'll be at Fairchild Community Center Parking Lot Saturday morning from 11 to 1, and then Monday evening from 5 to 7 at North Park near the farmer's market. And Tuesday of next week, we will be at Davidson Park from 5 to 7.
Very good. And are there any requirements, or what will folks be able to pick up at those?
They'll be able to pick up two masks per person in each vehicle, and it's all drive-through, so we'll have staff guiding traffic. They'll drive along next to the parking place. Staff will be masked and gloved, and we'll hand them the masks, and it should be a very quick process.
Masks suitable for adults or children?
Yes, many of them are adjustable.
Okay. Excellent. Any other council comments? All right. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion from council member Owen. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Motion is passed by votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward Butler and Owen. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and a big thank you to all the staff behind the scenes who make this meeting possible. Hope everyone has a safe time until our next meeting. Take care.
Have a good week.
See you guys later.
Good night.
Good night.